Good afternoon, and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting, June seventh, twenty twenty three, four P M. This meeting is called to order.
City Attorney Doctor, here.
City Manager Burke.
Here.
Mr. Logan.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Sherwood.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dean will be arriving shortly.
Thank you. Welcome, and thank you for participating in a City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased by this alternative meeting in the city's effort to broaden public participation. As we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. Welcome to the commentary. Please use the following tips and guidelines for the app usage in your participation. Commission comments, questions? Okay, well, I got a few words I want to. Over the past few months, I've observed. Heading in a direction that we have to discuss. And we don't have to agree with each other. That's independence. We are allowed a diversity of ideas. I am. The community we serve sees the dysfunction amongst the commission. It's time we reevaluate how we treat each other. We can disagree, but when the disagreement turns into insults and demeaning each other because of our interests don't align with each other, that's our becoming of the office. We were entrusted with. When we start to put local entities against each other, that's our becoming of the office. There is a reason the commission is nonpartisan. We work for all. We as a commission. Use social media to spew the dark whistle. That's our becoming. When we use social media to bully each other, that's our becoming. We should be an example, an example. That what a smooth commission should look like. As I was going through the agenda materials, I noticed the H R director had a section on standards of conduct. I would advise we read those. It's M C A two dash two dash one zero four. Jimmy Carter once stated, "The bond of our common humanity is stronger than the divisiveness of our fears and prejudices." God give us the capacity for choice. We can choose to alleviate suffering. We can choose to work together. We can make these changes, and we must. As Chair of this commission, I sincerely ask that we reevaluate how we treat one another. Thanks for listening. Presentations. Transportation Systems Metropolitan Planning Organization update. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission. There's two shares.
As stated, we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission. This is just to give you an update on our current ongoing process becoming designated as Metropolitan Planning Organization, M P O. This map here is the census boundary that basically qualified us with the higher than fifty thousand population. This map will get refined by M D T to incorporate some of these islands out here, as you can see, out towards East Helena. Basically smoothed the edges, but we have not received that as of yet, but that's forthcoming. This is our workflow that we've gone through, and the green checks obviously are the ones that have been completed. The dissolution of the T C C is ongoing. We have received all the signatures from everyone, and it's just way it's sitting in the sixty day waiting period as part of the original agreement before it gets dissolved completely. The next is the local government submit designation request package to M D T. Part of that is a letter that I had dropped off to the clerk's office to bring your signature, and then I'll go to the county in East Helena. And then the government designates the city, the city of the M P O has an M P O sometime late fall or towards the end of the year. They're shooting for December thirty first. After that, then we start getting into the committees, and some of those committees are the Technical Advisory Committee, the Policy Committees. Right now, we are already in discussion with the county in East Helena on what that membership looks like. What it taking membership looks at Great Falls and Missoula and Billings, who are current M P Os, and trying to see what works best for our area here. Like I said, we've already gone through some preliminary discussions with all three entities. And once we get a little bit more of the process from M D T on who actually designates it, how they get designated as the membership, we'll be moving forward with that process. So our intent is to get through these initial steps as quickly as possible so those planning funds become available to us as quickly as possible. Some of those timelines are based on the federal government's budget year. Some of them are just getting the right agreements in place. And since we have three entities that have to sign on to those, that may take a little time. Some of the required documentation of an M P O is a unified planning work program. It basically outlines our planning tasks, the M P O staff hours, cost estimates, and it's updated annually. The long range transportation plan, which the city has always had, now just gets a little bit more involved and a little bit more comprehensive and detailed there. We look at future goals, strategies, and projects. Typically, that gets updated about every five years. Then we have the T I P, which is the Transportation Improvement Program. This is a transportation investments to be implemented, project description, cost funding. It's kind of like a C I P, just with the M P O. That gets updated every four years is a requirement, but typically from what M D T tells us from the current three M P Os, they do that every one to two years, probably on just the the scale of the projects that are inside that tip is probably what requires the either annual or more more often update. And then a public participation plan, which the city already basically has one of those. We'll just update that if there's any steps missing from the M D T's point of view. And then the annual obligated projects list, just a list of projects that are obligated in the previous fiscal year, and that's updated annually. Any questions on the required documents?
Is it from each entity or just the world, the M P O as a whole?
So funding. The metro, we get metropolitan planning dollars, which are P L dollars. Those are provided to carry out the required planning process and documents. We'll get transit, our transit monies will come from a different fund. They'll switch to the fifty three oh three and fifty three oh seven. And no additional direct allocation of federal transportation funding is is comes with being designated as M P O. One of the, I guess, struggles that all the M P Os are going to see when we add them. The pot of money doesn't get bigger as you get more M P Os. The pot of money stays pretty much static, and it gets divided up by those M P Os. So M M D T gave us a estimate of what we could be looking at for planning dollars, and it's around three hundred thousand, but they haven't said. Our exact amounts, our transit funds, preliminary looks at those, looks like we're going to be receiving a little bit less than what we receive now. So our our next steps is obviously to get the designation signatures and get the designation from the governor, and then get to establish the makeup of the T A C and the P C C. So the difference between the T A C and the P C C is the T A C is the Technical Advisory Committee. They are the subject matter experts that answer the questions or look at the projects on a on that level. The P C C is the Policy Coordinating Committee, and they set policy. And so the T A C provides, you know, answers to the P C C, and then there's a back and forth there. And they're all required to carry out the three Cs, which is continuing cooperative and comprehensive metropolitan plan. So as we move into this, obviously, our first few plans will be the L R T P. Just to get up and running before we can really put money on the ground. And then we establish the makeup of the the committees and their first action, the P C C. First action of that is to start doing some of these agreements, bylaws. And as you see, post designation, the policy and technical committees develop bylaws, execute the federally required three Cs plan, appeal funding and performance based planning agreement, and develop the first U P W P. And then M D T's proposed timeline, the M P O approval of the U P W P by August twenty twenty four. Submit to F H W A by September twenty four and eligibility eligible to expend P L funds beginning in October twenty twenty four. We're proposing to push that timeline a little bit, and we'll see how how that works out. Questions on that?
Director Knopki, thank you for this. Wanted to ask, I'm sure there's, I assume there's guidance or criteria for the members that are be a part of the T A C and the P C C from the federal government or from the state.
Mayor Commissioners, we we assume so as well. We haven't been given that information. We're we're having monthly meetings with M D T and the appropriate staff from M D T, and they're walking through these steps. And coming up is our next meeting. We'll talk about the makeup of the T A C, the T A C and the P C C, as well as the other big meeting is to talk about the transit funding, and what does that look like? Because we'll be going from a state budget cycle to a federal budget cycle, so there is either going to be an overlap or a gap, and how do we contemplate that? I also added, after the questions, the frequently asked questions so that if people had additional questions that they want to look at, they could go through there and see, and if not, I'd be happy, they can, somebody can email me or and we'd be happy to get answers to those questions. Is if there's any other questions that you have to answer.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, I'd also like to take this opportunity to remind the Commissioner. Director Knopki is one person, one contact coordinator. On behalf of the City of Helena, the City of East Helena, and Lewis and Clark County, and our communications with M D T.
Organizations, M P Os are in the state, or will there be?
The Mayor Commission, currently there's three. That's Billings, Great Falls, and Missoula, and then after this process, they're designating two others, Helena and those.
So locally here, and you may have said this, and all this, and this, uh, locally here, what organizations will be part of this?
Mayor Commission, so the T A C is the subject matter experts that make up the majority. It's kind of like the T like the T C C. And we'll be pulling from city planning and engineering, transportation. We'll be pulling from the county planning and county engineering, city of East Helena. We're sitting down with them, have discussions on what level can they their participation, and then there's M D T, there's potential for the A D A, Health Department. You know, any of these groups that make up our transportation system, and it's thought this is a multimodal transportation. This just isn't about roads, this is about our multimodal system, so. Again, we're trying to rough out what those look like, but we're still waiting on the guidance from M D T to this. Who 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 says what the makeup is going to be? Is that the the group that's, you know, establishing the M P O? Is that M D T? Is that the commissions as a as a body, both the Lewis and Clark County and Helena and the East Helena's Council? So we're kind of waiting to hear on that, just so we can start dialing those makeups.
Commissioners, I would just add, the three entities that have final approval are the City of Helena, the City of East Helena, Lewis and Clark County. So those recommendations will come before the three government bodies. I'm assuming that there will be an interlocal agreement based upon federal and state standards.
Yes, Mayor Commission and City Manager, they're one of those initial agreements is an interlocal agreement to basically participate in the M P O. And it's pretty generic, but it outlines some of the basic guidelines and requirements.
Do you have any public comments? That's what you want me to ask.
Mr. Mayor, I have no.
Right. Board appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. A D A Compliance Committee, appointment of Jamie Renoff to an interim term of A D A Compliance Board as a medical field representative. Interim term will expire September first, twenty twenty four. Business Improvement District, appointment of Alice Santos to an interim term on the Business Improvement District. Interim term will expire October thirty first, twenty twenty five. Citizens Conservation Board, appointment of Nora Page McFadden to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. Term will expire February twenty eight, twenty twenty four. Gulf Advisory Board, appointment of Jim Crankoff to an interim term on on the Gulf Advisory Board. Interim term will expire October thirty first, twenty twenty three. Appointment of Rob Logsdon to an interim term of Gulf on the Gulf Advisory Board. Interim term will expire October thirty first, twenty twenty three. Police Commission, reappointment of Derek Van Locken to a third term on the Police Commission. Term will expire May one, twenty twenty seven. Railroad Tiff Advisory Board, appointment of Catherine Anderson to the Railroad Tiff Advisory Board as Montana Business Assistant Connection Representative. This is an on expired term. Tourism B I D, appointment of Keith Burkmann to a first term on a Tourism B I D. Term will expire April twentieth, twenty twenty six. Any discussion from the commission? Do you have any public comments?
Can you tell me about that one, the tourism?
Oh, come on. Keith Burkmann, B R U G M A N.
Thank you.
All right. Any any online ask, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay. Recommendations from Health and Citizens Council to Representative Emily Morris. Do we have Emily?
Hi, I I'm here. I apologize. I'm on Zoom, so it always takes a second. Um, hi, thank you for having us. The Helena Citizens Council doesn't have any new recommendations at this time. We have some outstanding recommendations that we've submitted in writing that we have not heard back on, to my knowledge. And we recently submitted our budget recommendation, which I believe we'll be discussing later on in this meeting. So that's all we have going on at this time.
Thank you. City Manager's report. Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report. Department report, F Y twenty four, budget discussion, final review before preliminary budget submitted. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I am here to just follow up on our last administrative meeting. There were some outstanding issues that we wanted to discuss so that we could wrap up getting our fiscal twenty four preliminary budget document prepped and ready for a commission meeting on the twelfth. I'm not sure if you can see this. I'm not sure how I how I expanded on my screen, but I will. I will do that so that you can hopefully see it better. Thank you. So where we left off is that I believe that there was consensus to fund the Humane Society increase over four percent, which resulted in an impact of thirteen hundred and nineteen dollars to the general fund. These are all general fund impacts to fund the Historic Preservation Full Ask, which increased the twenty thousand that was in the budget up to sixty thousand, so a forty thousand dollar impact. As Manager Burton indicated last time, that although we are budgeting for the forty thousand dollar increase, we'd still need to have further discussions on, you know, that relationship with the Historic Preservation Office, and I can have Manager Burton elaborate on that.
Please. Mayor Commissioners, very briefly, I did speak with Mr. Bolts, the Chief Administrative Officer from Lewis and Clark County. It's been decades since we reviewed the interlocal agreement between the county and the city. I think we've got some operational issues that we'd like to talk about. Mr. Bolts has agreed to entertain an update to that interlocal agreement. So my recommendation to the commission, if you choose to approve forty thousand increases, allow me to withhold it until we've been through the update of the interlocal agreement with Lewis and Clark County. Sure.
Thank you, Manager Burton. We also input eight thousand dollars for an M O U, and this is for fiscal twenty four, for trash collection and flower maintenance to fund the sidewalk program at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and to fund general capital at one thou- one million, one hundred and ninety seven dollars and forty, four hundred and ninety eight dollars. Sorry, I didn't say that right. One million, one hundred and ninety seven, four hundred and ninety eight, which leaves the adjusted revenue over expenditures for the general fund as it stands now as a negative one, one million, four hundred and seventy one dollars, four hundred and seventy one, one hundred and nine. Numbers, but you see it on the screen. There you go. So some outstanding items that still need consensus from the commission is that part of the general fund savings requests was funding for the swimming pool operations to fund it. One hundred percent in both fiscal twenty three and fiscal twenty four were left open for further conversation, but we needed a direction from the commission to either include or exclude the additional eighty thousand needed to fund them for fully operating in fiscal twenty four. I believe that the full general fund operating cash reserves that we're requesting were a little bit around two hundred and one thousand dollars from our presentation that the that the swimming pool would need for both fiscal twenty three and fiscal twenty four operating needs. And then with the with the direction that we would look at the operations of of the swimming pool to also determine what are the funding sources, including rate increases, that we could implement in order to sustain the pool moving forward. There were also some outstanding items on whether or not the commission wanted to move forward with funding community grants that we've historically funded over the last few years, and so I pulled those out for your consideration to be spent by with cash reserves. And when I look back at my calculation of our cash reserves and what I like to have for an operating target plus our money that's already been allocated for general fund savings. There is about one point three million dollars left in in unallocated cash reserves that that could have a potential for funding some of these decisions that are before you tonight. I'm happy to have any other questions. We also can discuss any further amendments that the commissioners would like to propose for the budget in any one of the funds. I did include a summary of where our cash balances are and operations are in your packets for your consideration. This is what will be going into the preliminary budget packet with just some minor edits, and then any other further decisions that are made tonight will be updated in our preliminary budget. So at this time, I'm open for questions from the commission or any further directions from the commission on on the preliminary fiscal twenty four budget.
Very good, Danielson. I may be wrong, but I thought we agreed to fund the pool. Yes, Mayor, and I, if I might. Please. I believe that informally, we had two conversations. One was funding the and so the the pool operates now, but then it has to start up next fiscal year. And so the number did change, and we talked about it, but we just wanted to be absolutely sure that you're agreed to fund a full season of the pool, which includes the startup next year. And then that period of time, that year, we're charged with coming back with recommendations to more always fund the pool's present operation on a more sustainable basis. So I think we're really asking you for a second nod, and we did recommend that eighty thousand come out of ARPA or general fund savings. Right. Okay, I hear you. Thank you. Any comments from the commission? Second nod.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Just two questions. Director Danielson, so on the sheet, when we're talking about the pool, it are we talking about that as eighty thousand from ARPA or not from ARPA? That that was not clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, Mayor. That that is a request to come from the general fund savings.
So not ARPA, even though ARPA is general fund savings?
Well, so. ARPA, okay, it's ARPA. It's, it's, there's confusion because we, ARPA is what created the general fund savings. And so, um, our ARPA dollars have already been audited and spent and are gone. So, but created a, a large cash reserve that we're now referring to as general fund savings.
Okay, so this would then appear on the ARPA balance as, okay. Um, my second question, um, looking at the sheet, the, uh, one of the community grants is HACF, and I know that HACF has received a, a number of, um, grants through CARES and ARPA. Do we know what the outstanding balance is with HACF at this point, unspent, from the funds that they've received over the last two to three years?
Thank you. Um, Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioner Reed, um, I, I'm not exactly sure what that number is. I know that they're scheduled to bring, um, a presentation at, um, the administrative meeting later this month to go over all of their, um, funding, although I do believe that they have spent most of the monies that, uh, we have, uh, granted to them. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I do have a question, so you, sorry, I, I know online, I'm hard to hear, but you need decision, decisions from us on all of these items, is that accurate?
Mayor, Commissioner, that is accurate, no, because what decisions on these final remaining decisions, then we'll incorporate that into the preliminary budget that will go into the main commission meeting for your consideration.
I guess to that end, I would just say my comments, uh, are similar to, to what I expressed at the last regular meeting. Um, I'm comfortable with the general fund operations recommendations and the pool. Uh, the community, community grants, I'm not comfortable with, just from the standpoint of sort of principled idea that it, if we're having difficulties with, you know, sustainably funding the pool and, uh, funding historic preservation, or just a couple of examples, sidewalk program could be in there as well. Um, long time commitments that have been made by the city of Helena to, uh, its residents. If we're having difficulty funding those, I, I'm not sure, what, I don't feel comfortable funding organizations outside of the city of Helena. So that's, those are my thoughts on that.
Any others?
Mayor, um, I, I, with the pool, um, I like the idea of having, um, the recommendations for next year to make it more sustainable. I think there's ideas that we can come up with internally or externally, um, to make it, whether it's hours of operation, fees, um, cost of maintenance, et cetera, I think there's ways to, to do that. With regards to, I guess I did have a question, um, that's okay, ask, uh, Director Danielson about the adjusted balance, is that a, is the 1.4 plus, that's not a deficit, is it?
Yes, sir.
So that's, so, oh, go ahead.
It's technically using money that we have in the bank, sure not ifs, uh, okay.
Yeah, and thank, thank you, um, so, and, and, uh, just a clarification on that as well, we, um, we typically fund general capital with cash reserves. So this is just a, uh, it's, it's a negative spending for current revenues over current expenditures. However, it's draw, the, the capitalist is drawing from cash reserves. The other items, though, you know, are, are not covered by, you know, like the, the negative 74,000, the, the Humane Society Historic Preservation and the, and the BID MOU were additional operating costs that current revenues could not fund. And we are using cash reserves to fund those for fiscal 24, although we would look to next year to, to shore that up so that current revenues would cover those operating expenses.
Thank you. In my opinion, I believe we should support the community grants. Because I see each one of those activities, each one of those entities have played a vital role in this, and I want us to do whatever we can to support. Go ahead.
Uh, are you done? So the audio's a little fuzzy on my end, so I wasn't sure if you had finished.
Oh, yes, I'm done.
Okay, um, I would say I also support, um, the swimming pool, 80,000. Uh, I'm cautiously optimistic that we will find excellent solutions, um, to greater sustainability there. Um, with the community grants, I'm, I'm generally supportive, I think they are important. I would be curious to know what the balance is with HACF before we commit to the 20,000. I think the 20,000 is a standard amount, but that does not necessarily take into account what they've received to date. So if we could possibly hold that number, I don't know if we need that decision today, um, to see what the balance is and what the need is this year, because perhaps it's different, um, than previous years. And otherwise, I am supportive of, uh, those standing community grants, thank you.
Is, um, Commissioner Dean is coming, or she's beyond, she will be on, uh, so?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I believe that she was planning on attending.
All right, I know we give you some muddy.
That was a, sorry, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to make one comment, please, um, with regards to community grants, I, I would like to see the presentation from HACF, I think that'd be helpful, but if we need a decision in support of the community grants, but, uh, um, to be able to hear them out at a later date, we find, I'm sure, muddying the waters even more, but, uh, we, if, this is for our Monday commission meeting, to have these decisions, is this, will this help for that presentation on Monday?
Um, Mayor, Commissioner, sure, look, um, right now, I'm already pulling together my budget document. Um, it's just too quick of a turnaround to have June 7th meeting and, and change all the documents. They're all Excel documents and Word documents, I don't get to press a magic button and have it spit out for me. With that said, um, well, I will be preparing a separate memo of the, the decisions that are made in this. And then so when we actually present the resolution on the 26th, we'll have incorporated all your decisions.
And so, um, I know that Commissioner Dean is waiting to pass, and I think she'll probably have the opportunity to support and bring it forward, but this will be an addendum discussion at the commission meeting. Uh, and at this point, in that memo, you'll see general fund operations included, including, as you know, the department heads got together that used the 440 fund and made recommendations. The commission will review that at the last meeting. It will include the 80,000 for the pool for the full season. The full season operation, including startup next year. And then we can have any further discussion on, on the community grants, if necessary, Monday night, and moving forward adoption of the budget, so you have a couple more opportunities. And, uh, I would like, would like to know that if you're comfortable, if you do improve the, the, the increase with historic preservation, if I might delay releasing that money until the work room updated, the interlocal with Lewis and Clark County.
I'm okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd say I'm comfortable with that approach, I, I think you brought up a great point. When we were originally discussing this, uh, months or so ago, about, um, some restrictions maybe that, um, have existed in task, uh, relevant to the office and, and hopefully that, um, agreement would.
Yeah, Mayor, I would just say that any update to the interlocal agreement will have to come before you for approval.
Uh, Commissioner Reed, can you hear clearly?
I can hear some people more clearly than others, but generally, I'm, I'm catching most of it.
I know you, you put it a little closer. All right. You gotta raise your voice up. I'll stand up. Okay, thank you. I think it's, yeah, it's for the 40,000 for preservation, I think it's a good. Thank you. Danielson, you still have the floor.
Um, and that is all I have for, um, uh, my presentation on the, um, preliminary budget, unless the Commission would like to make any further, um, recommended changes to, um, our fiscal 24 preliminary budget, I'm open to, um, that conversation.
Yes, I just want to make this comment, if I may, I appreciate all the time that we've all put into the budget process. It's kind of fun to get to this time of the year to finish line, being very close. Real leadership, excellent policy decisions as a preliminary budget, not adopted. It certainly shows that you have a mission, order of choice, and to improve our ability to recruit and retain good people. So, thank you.
Thanks. Moving along, Bravo, fiscal year 24 budget, HCC budget recommendations.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, um, I, uh, we received, the city received, and I believe you're all copied on the recommendations from the Helena, um, Citizens Commission to, um, present their fiscal 24 budget recommendations. Um, I just queued it up in your packet in order for them to have an opportunity to, um, in that conversation with you, so they indicated that they had a representative online, um, to present that. And so I will turn it over to the representative of HCC to, to take, uh, this agenda item.
Okay, you have the floor, HCC Chair Casey Colmarosla.
Hi, I apologize, but it's not Casey Cole, it's, um, Emily Mowers, I, I'm stepping in and helping out, so please bear with me. I, I wasn't quite sure what I was in for, um, with this line item on the agenda. So, um, you should, like, as I said, have the recommendations, um, available to you. Um, I'm not sure what would be most beneficial to you, I could pop through the summary of the review, or if you guys would like to just ask questions about our, um, our budget recommendations, I, I'm open to that as well. I'm not sure what would be most beneficial to the body.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the HCC budget? Do you have any online, uh, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Reed, can you hear?
Okay, uh, Ms. Morris, would you, uh, just give us a, a summary, please?
Um, yes, again, bear with me, I will do my best, I am, uh, I'm, I was part of the meeting, but it's a lot of information, so I'm gonna try and be concise, or as concise as possible, um. The general overview, um, there, it's a large budget, the city is a large budget, so we didn't touch every individual piece, but there are items that we did support or supported, um, changes to the budget or general, um, philosophies on how to use budget. So, our general fund overview, um, was just that we, we support the 4% COLA, um, and, and we agreed that retaining employees is important, um. We didn't really look at the police and court fund 012, um, the fire department fund 013, um. We didn't have any specific recommendations, the transportation fund, the HCC did request, um, that we reallocate the 650,000 that is proposed for the Benton Turn Lane project near the transportation, the Bill Roberts Golf Course, um, towards non-motorized projects such as crosswalk improvements, um, in, in various locations throughout Helena that we've, I, I believe, discussed, um, safe routes to schools for Knight Street and Broadwater, um, and the safe routes to school budget. We also supported $100,000 for RRFBs, uh, for crosswalks, and specifically request a line item for installation at Benton and Hauser and Benton and Stewart. And then we also supported finishing the downtown multimodal plan and implementing that plan. For community facilities, uh, fund 212 and 213, the Citizens Council, um, recommended, um, her supports, sorry, supports the facility department capital fund budget requests, um, that are listed in the packet, which is overview, sustainability, safety, construction and maintenance projects, projects, and, um, the administration, which is just new staffing structure, 30-year CCIP with funding plan and implementation of computerized maintenance software. We had no specific comment on the, um, public works depart, oh, um, we did, uh, public works department fund 512, which is water. Um, we recommended that the, uh, promotion of water conservation at residential and commercial facilities be continued. Um, the establishment of a water-wise best practice policy for city-owned properties and operations. Uh, we encouraged collaboration with Lewis and Clark County Water Quality Protection District on its plan to promote water-wise practices and water conservation. And we repeated our 2022 recommendation to allocate funding for a water conservation specialist. Um, wastewater fund 531, um, the department, or the Citizens Council recommends, uh, the PWD follow Commissioner Dean's suggestion and provide an explanation of what services the PWD provides and the need for the rate increases. Um, and then fund 541, the HCC recommended the city continue to implement its strategic plan for waste reduction and look for opportunities from the Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan to identify specific actions to achieve Helena's wastewater or waste reduction goals by, of 35% by 2030 and 50% by 2040. So that was a lot of information, that's kind of the highlights of what we looked at specifically. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you.
Okay, water and wastewater service line program, Director Leland, Deputy Director Coleman, uh, City Engineer Clark. You have the floor.
Sorry, first time, what's the new? All right, there we go.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, just wanted to, uh, bring back the service line loan program, we've talked about it. Um, give a little bit of history. Um, 2018, we started the service line 0% loan, uh, program for residential areas to be able to replace their. areas to be able to replace their service lines with zero percent interest. The water we had two, two dollars and fifty cents per month per resident. Wastewater was six forty seven per resident per month. In two thousand twenty one, we reduced the wastewater to two fifty. And then in two thousand twenty two, we eliminated all of them because we did have it capitalized. We didn't get to see the usage that we were expecting when we set the rates. But it is being used. And you can look there, there's forty two loans at the time that we started this. There are seven more loans that are in process right now. Trent, can you go over just what are you seeing per year on that one?
Yeah, so per year, we're seeing about four or five in each fund per year. That number has gone up though significantly. By year, starting with FY nineteen, we were at one, in twenty went to twelve, then it went to five, eight, and we're currently at nineteen right now with three more making way through this building approved. They're just getting finalized. And four more that have been pre-approved, but are not, work is not being completed yet. Run now, I would expect probably a probably close to that fifteen to twenty per year average, I would expect running forward.
Okay, thank you. Then just to give where we are at the funds right now in water, we're at like nine hundred and fifty thousand. It changes a little bit depending on if we're giving loans out or the interest rate for wastewater, because we had the higher initial costs and we tend to see wastewater lines get failed before water lines fail. So we had a little bit more, so we have one point eight million roughly in there. And again, we have seventeen loans in water, twenty five in wastewater. Looking at it, this is all about assumptions. There were a lot of assumptions done. Phil How took a look at it, Jamie Clark took a look at it, Sheila took a look at it. So they all came up with a pretty good estimate of what this would be capitalized. It has so many variables. But putting theirs, we look like in water, we're capitalized to twenty, twenty five years depending on how it is used. And then in wastewater, we're up to thirty to forty years that it is capitalized at the current rate that is going. We currently have it capped at fifteen dollar, or fifteen thousand dollars per loan for water and wastewater. That's where the biggest assumption is gonna be. Do we keep it at fifteen? Down the road, five, ten years, right now fifteen is, is good. But do we need to increase it to twenty to thirty to forty as this program continues? So that is some of the variables that we're out there to see what we really capitalize at. Could be longer. We might not see usage that we're getting at. So we did come up with three options based on the current assumption that with the commission is we're gonna continue this. If this, we'd stop the conversation if we say we're just gonna shut down this program. But what I've gotten in previous conversations with the commission is we're gonna continue with the existing program. And then if we do capitalize them both to twenty years, water is there. Wastewater would have additional funds around nine hundred thousand. So we could look at it, and this is based on what commission has said. Those are the assumptions that I'm going on. We could do status quo. We can reduce future rate increases and/or do a rebate. And there's various forms that we could do a rebate, give money back to the properties that we'll go over. But right now with status quo, the program is well funded. Wastewater would have a little bit of extra, but as I said, you are going to continue to see more and more wastewater than water just for the fact that routes get involved, water lines tend to last longer. But that's where, say, just, just is the trend right now. And then we'd have to look at the maximum increase in the future. Then future offsets with that would take a code change, so we'd have to go back into one point one dash five dash three and make changes to that to allow us to be able to take the money that was set aside for the service line program to be able to do something else with it. So it would take a code change. It is very complicated when you throw nine hundred thousand dollars into the wastewater fund because this came with just residential. We don't want to look at it for commercial, to give commercial a break or multifamily break because they did not pay into it. And because this gets complicated is it's not as if you're throwing in one time money for a capital fund. This would be to offset rates and you get into a cost of services issue is you wanna, what generates cost is flow and concentration of, of waste. And if you don't increase them at a constant rate, commercial, and then at the end when nine hundred thousand is used up, you have a disproportionate share of what the actual rate is. So it gets very, very complicated and we can get in, I sat and talked for probably an hour and a half, two hours on that specific cost of service one with Phil Howke. It gets very interesting. I enjoyed it, but we won't bore you with those details. But looking at it is we could, looking at offset depending what the rates would be, six to eight years that we wouldn't have to see a rate increase for residential and then we'd have to come back and look at it because that's when the cost of service really starts to get out of whack. So we could comfortably say we have six to eight years, we probably wouldn't have to see a rate increase for residential only for wastewater. Then the other one you look at is if you want to give it back, we'd have to do a code, a code change on that. The maximum rebate that we are looking at is seventy five dollars per resident. Then there would be software that would have to be written in our current program that we have for, for for finance, it would have to be rewritten. You're looking at about seventy five thousand dollars to be able to get something one form or another to be able to go forward with mailing stuff back. We may be able to refine that and.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I also want to just add a caveat to that, that we don't even know if the current software can provide a consultant to do that work for us. So that, that is a, that is a caveat to that.
And ways we looked at it is you could do is, do we refund, who paid? Then you have to go back into when properties are sold, who owned that, where that person went. That becomes such a quagmire and so big, but that is one that we did look at. Then the other one is you just say it's inequitable that someone has only paid on that property for six months is gonna get that seventy five dollar check. But that is one way that we are looking at. So those are two ways you could possibly look at it to be able to provide, to refund the money if you so choose. And then another one is, do we just credit the, you know, just credit the bill for the wastewater and people don't pay for several months? So those are ways we can look at it. So if you are willing to go there, we can bring this back up and and make, have a much more in-depth conversation. And staff's recommendation is to keep the status quo, just keep the money in there. As long as we have that program operating, just keep it in there and we can revisit it periodically to see if we need to raise the maximum amount of loan. And then the other part to add in there is as we get more and more loans, not only in this, is we would like to discuss bringing in an administrative fee so we can help offset some of the general fund and some of the staff time that is taken up into doing that. So that's one that we bring out up into the future. But with that, any questions?
I agree with staff recommendation. Because like I heard your, the engineers stating that we're getting more and more people signing up for the program. And so I think we should stay status quo. That's my, I don't know, but the rest, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor? So I guess I'll start with, I guess I'll start with a few questions. So could you go back to the slide on the code? Maybe it seemed like each of the ideas were a rebate might happen or a rate increase, which is essentially giving back to the people that paid in to the system to some degree, that didn't get a benefit out of, which is ninety nine and a half percent of the users, really the system, that, that didn't get any kind of benefit, yet they paid. The, I'm just gonna read this. "The commission may by resolution from time to time transfer from one fund to another all monies in the treasury received from licenses, fines and penalties, but monies collected as taxes levied for specific purposes shall not be diverted from the purposes for which they were levied." So I don't know if you can briefly answer, but why would that code change be required?
Mayor Commissioners, the, it's a good question. When you look at the code itself, that the collection of these monies are neither licenses, fines or penalties. So the code doesn't speak to, so it's either licenses, fines, penalties or taxes. If it's none of the above, the code doesn't speak to it. And so the resolution does. And the resolution says the monies are used for the purposes of funding the loan, the service line loan program. And so it is my recommendation that if we're going to change, we can change a resolution by undoing the resolution. But the question is whether or not this is taxes. I think you've raised that yourself. And I'm not gonna speak for you, but some would argue that those are taxes because some folks didn't get benefits for it. I have looked at that discussion and I don't, I don't see these as taxes, but I don't see how the code speaks to it. So the resolution says we have to use it for the purposes for which it was, it was created, and that's for the service line program.
Mayor Commissioners, I would also add that it's kind of like other discussions we've gotten into where you have street assessments to make, take rest rates and people argue that I only have a hundred foot in front of my house, why do I have to do this? And that is, the street system's open to your use anytime. In front of your house. This program is available to all members of the sewer water system or utility in the city. I think further, further direction is in Montana statute, which does not allow us to take water and wastewater fees and allocate them beyond water and wastewater for which purpose they would collect.
So as, as you can imagine, I do struggle with the fee being a tax, which goes back to how it was implemented in the first place that we, as citizens or residents, can have the opportunity to vote on, which is why the idea of rebate is quite appealing to me. So I'll end that. So the slide you said you determined that any rebate seventy five dollars, how, how did you arrive at that amount?
Mayor Commissioner, it was a very simple one. It's basically the nine hundred thousand divided by the residential number of accounts that we have for residential only. Because we aren't gonna refund commercial and we're not gonna do multifamily, so it was just seventy five thousand, give or take, or seventy five hundred, give or take.
Seventy five.
Seven five dollars, sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm winding down. But a couple more. So you'd mentioned an administrative fee in the future. Who's, who's paying for that? Who, who do you envision paying for that?
The fund? Will, will be applying for it?
Well, one of the discussions, Mayor and Commissioners, that we've had is there's been a lot of loan programs created, whether it's through the housing fund, whether it's through this particular program. We've got other solar, solar program, and so we end up managing all these loans. What was never considered individually or collectively as this program was developed was how do we support it at the staff level and maintain our existing workload on top of that. Director Dan, whose team manages, finally, we had various departments managing, but we've centralized all of that in finance. Could probably speak more accurately to the staffing challenges.
So would that be added, would that be paid by someone who took out a law?
Yeah.
And my last question. Last gasp on the rebate idea because I don't think it's going anywhere, but did, did you look at the possibility of an individual residential user, utility customer applying to get money back? So the work's on them.
Mayor Commissioner, what, if I understand your question, is one person coming in and saying, I want my money back that I paid into?
Let's go that raw.
With that, Mayor Commission, no, I didn't, we did not look into that because that brings up a lot of, lot of issues that we have not delved into, and I don't know if we legally could. So I, we have not looked into that part of it.
No exactly how much I've paid into the, as you can imagine, as I nerded out on this. So.
May I address that, that comment? So I just want to indicate also that at this, at this point, if somebody comes in and says they want all their money back and then we get all of the rate pairs that come in, we're gonna run out of money. Because some, you know, because we've loaned it out. And, and there are actually several loans that are deferred. So which means they're not going to ever pay the loan back unless they sell their property. Or, you know, if they deceased and it passes on to another, to another person. So we would technically, I think, run out of money if everybody that paid into it. So then what happens if we don't have the money to pay back, you know, that thirteen thousandth person that comes in and I, I'm just throwing it out there as an example. You know, I think that then the general fund would be on the hook to have to start rebating that. And I, just one more comment on that also is that, you know, I, I know that the, the staff down in the department that report to me in the utility billing office, I believe that that would place a, a pretty large burden on them to try to verify all of those requests. And I'm not sure, you know, at this point, what that burden would be, but I know that those staff members are busy from the moment they open those doors to the, to the time they go home and they're, and, and, you know, something like that, to open the door to something like that, I think would create a burden enough to have to look at another staffing option to fulfill that request for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and gotta say thanks to staff for looking into this clearly, put a lot of work into this and you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's any secret, I've not particularly wild about the way the program is structured and was implemented. So I'll just say I tried and I know you all have as well, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor, I'd just like to conclude that having reviewed the program. This, but it's capitalized. It's on a growth trajectory relative to use. I, I think that it's a good program. And I think there are policy issues between all of that. That however, does not preclude further discussion whereby the city commission could endorse the NLC service line program, which I believe is really complimentary of this. If a person has an emergency, this is due to the program at zero percent interest. But there's also the NLC program, which you can choose to buy that warranty where if something occurs that way, the service line program would cover the cost of that repair. So this would then be a backup, and if you want to have further discussions on that in the future, we can certainly bring it forward.
Do you have any other? Madam Clerk, do we have any? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I, I appreciate the discussion. It's been interesting learning more about it. And having heard the presentation, I would also support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have any online public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay.
Okay, uh. Commissioner.
Hi, Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry. My board is speaking.
Okay, we're moving along. Tourism Business Improvement District Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Work Plan and Budget Presentation. Director Opitz and/or Director Dandless, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Um, okay, we have uh, uh, the, the executive director of the um, Helena Tourism Business Improvement District, or Helena Tourism Alliance, um, here, Andrea Opitz, and she is here to present their annual work plan and budget for the uh, tourism district. And I'm going to turn it over to Andrea to, to give her presentation.
Thank you, she, Mayor Commissioners. Um, yes, and I will also provide a summary and, and then allow you to ask any questions. Um, so it's quite lengthy. I, I'm not going to um, go through it all, but I will give you the highlights. Um, essentially, we um, at the Helena TBID will continue to follow our organizational mission, which is to promote and preserve Helena as a unique destination. Um, ultimately trying to increase occupancy for our lodging partners and also create vibrant growth in the local economy. Um, so that really doesn't change. We do that um, through a variety of methods. Um, we'll continue to focus on leisure, um, sports and tournaments, groups and meetings. Um, one of the exciting things that will be happening this November in terms of sports is Helena will be hosting Special Olympics again. Um, we are, we're selected as the host city for the next three years. Um, and so we're very grateful to um, have that opportunity again. Um, in terms of our programs, we will continue to um, work with the Tourism Business Improvement District Grant Program, which requires uh, funding for um, events and um, yeah, different kind of entertainment based events for those that are willing to um, yeah, bring uh, new offerings to Helena. We support that in terms of financial and uh, in marketing dollars. And then of course, uh, the other program is our frontline training program. And so um, in, in marketing Helena, obviously we want to, no, we consider just a pass through destination, but um, an actual destination where people could come and stay and choose us as a location. Also, uh, would really like to expand outside, outside of the seasonality and be much more uh, year-round focused. So um, that's on the marketing side. On the management side, we also understand that we need to play a key role in ensuring that our local stakeholders and business partners um, are kept abreast of um, those events, of those visitors, of those high season um, tournaments and meetings, so that they aren't caught off guard. And we continue to ensure that our visitors have a quality experience, but our residents also have a quality experience. So, um, let's see here, the other two things I wanted to mention um, along the marketing lines are um, we are, will be working closely with the uh, Montana Historical Society as they work to open the Montana Heritage Center in twenty-twenty-five. And so um, excitingly enough, uh, next year is going to be the hundred and sixtyth anniversary for Helena. So we see that as a great opportunity to, and launching point to be able to start um, celebrating that opening of the Heritage Center and um, align our efforts in terms of marketing promotion, um, even when it comes to attending certain um, certain trade shows, how could we partner with um, the state and really uh, make a, a larger impact? So um, that, and then with marketing, there really have been amazingly great strides over the last year um, with the city of Helena and other community partners, including the Business Improvement District, um, downtown Helena Inc., um, Montana Business Assistance Connection, to really align our messaging and efforts come with, um, we had a unified brand and messaging. Um, that was quite a long, um, but very effective process where we now have a very functional and intentional roadmap that we will continue to um, now, now the real work comes with implementing and executing that roadmap and, and that plan. So that will be a major focus um, along with PR. One of the things that came out of that discussion for that larger group, um, and it definitely um, it, we're included in that and feel like we can help do some heavy lifting is with the PR and the earned media. And I would say um, that, that messaging and that promotion of the good work that is being done in the wonderful community that we all live in and um, and share, uh, it, it just needs to be communicated. We're, we're doing great work, but we're not always um, communicating and sharing that well um, with Helena, uh, with, with, with the city of Helena. So we will, we will diligently work on, on that so that we can strengthen community vitality, vitality, our competitive positioning, and really ensure the long-term viability of Helena. So with that, um, if you see the budget, um, our budget obviously reflects those priorities. Um, the majority of the budget you will see um, goes into the marketing, the publicity, and then those opportunity and grant programs. So I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Opitz. Comments or questions from the commission?
This is my, I have one. Um, so this, um, really appreciate the presentation. Um, one of the things that you probably have heard come up in some of our ARPA conversations is the Trail Rider um, program that the TBID used to be involved with.
Yes.
And is no longer involved with. Um, and I, I guess can you maybe talk about do not do that and what are the options now?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Um, I live even. So this program, um, let's see, I'm going back five years, twenty eighteen. Um, uh, just the historical backdrop of, of that program. It did start at the Business Improvement District. And at one point in time, the Tourism Business Improvement District thought it made sense to be housed uh, under, under us. And so we took that on and we had um, a very successful program. Um, we managed the program and we had a memo of understanding with the city of Helena and Capital City Transit um, to operate the program. So they supplied the vehicles, the drivers, and um, and handled that. So um, we didn't choose to discontinue, but um, because of maintenance of the, the vehicles and the shortage in drivers, um, the city was no longer, and Capital City Transit was no longer able to continue to um, operate. So that left a gap in the system, um, where we don't have a vehicle. We had a trailer, I have a twenty-seven foot trailer, but that's it. Um, ironically, at that time, there was a new tour operator that was starting um, their business, Vigilante Shuttles and Tours. And so um, I will back up just a second. Um, Capital City Transit did surplus that vehicle to us. And so um, the goal with Vigilante Shuttles and Tours was to hopefully make it through one more season utilizing that veh- vehicle. We would partner um, with Kurt in the same manner that we did. Um, we had a memo of understanding to be the operator, supply the drivers. We um, basically donated slash sold the vehicle to him for a very small amount. And um, as luck would have it, we made it through the extended bonus weekend with that vehicle and Kurt pulled up in front of his house and that was the end of the vehicle. So um, over the following year, he was able to build up his fleet. We had a successful um, season and then COVID hit. Uh, we were still in the middle of COVID. Um, and Kurt also found Vigilante Shuttles and Tours was in the same position where they also were struggling with drivers. Um, this was a side business. Kurt also had um, a family and was a full-time nurse. And so looking at what was on his plate, he had to make the decision that something had to go. And um, I knew when he showed up at my office unannounced, it wasn't good. And so, um, that kind of ended up being the end of the Trail Rider. So it, it, as it stands now, um, again, we, we have a trailer, only I don't have the manpower or a vehicle um, to pull off that program. And so I, I, I really, we genuinely gave it our all. And um, so what I, what I didn't want to do, you know, there were, there are still those discussions about the Trail Rider and it, there was a lot of confusion about the operating versus the managing. Um, I, I don't want to um, start something that isn't going to be successful. I mean, I feel like as it stands, we, we had a successful run. Um, the only way I would entertain that program is if somebody came to me and was prepared with, with a driver, um, with a vehicle, or if the city was interested in, and is now in a different space where they, they do have the ability to um, reignite.
Good. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Dean. I had uh, the same question. I just want to ask one, one more slight follow-up on the Trail Rider. Um, I had heard from community members about, you know, an interest in bringing it back. And is this something, you know, were there to be different discussions and were there to be capacity? Would TBID still be interested in the program? Or do you think it is um, something where uh, the assets that you have could be relocated somewhere else? Cause I do keep hearing from community members that there's an interest in the service. Um, and perhaps it's just a matter of finding a new home. Thanks.
Mayor Commissioners, um, yes, always open to entertaining that, um, providing that it's a realistic conversation with, yeah, realistic dollars. Like us receiving ARPA funds for one year is, to kickstart the program is, is not going to be sustainable. So I would want something um, that gives me a little less gray hair and um, you know, well.
So must die.
Uh, I, I mean, that's it. I'm really interested in the sustainability of the program, not just to kickstart.
Question, is there anything maybe for staff or you all as well? Is there anything that prevents a private business from doing that?
No, there is, there is um, this season, there is um, shred, yes, Montana shred. Um, the problem is ours was free. Uh, and it was really, uh, you know, much more community-based, eighty percent local, twenty percent visitors. Um, were the stats that I've tracked for the last five years, as well as the Institute for Tourism and Recreation Research out of U of M. And so that, that is a hard, that's a, that's a hard piece to, it's thirteen dollars for a ride now where ours was free. And the, the program was also free because of us um, working with sponsors. And to try and find sponsors in this environment after the last couple of years is also quite challenging. I, um, we're just in a different space, so, so that adds another layer. Um, the TBID does value the program and we would be interested in, in dedicating some funding, but um, roughly that, that is about a nine thousand dollar program to operate free like we did, so.
Any other comments from the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Director Opitz, thanks for your presentation. Okay, uh, we're, oh, Business Improvement District Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Work Plan and Budget. Director Dandy, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Director Dandy. Um, Mayor Commissioners, um, uh, tonight we have the uh, executive director of the uh, Business Improvement District, John Dendley here to uh, present their annual budget work plan and um, and their, their annual budget and work plan. Um, I uh, had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Dandy and um, go over their proposed assessment methodology for fiscal twenty-four. Um, I know that uh, in the prior year, there was uh, an assessment methodology that was, that was discussed. And um, uh, Mr. Dandy and his board went back to the drawing board and they um, worked out a plan that I believe uh, they feel is uh, less difficult to understand um, from the um, property owners within the district. Um, I agree with that and um, I looked at the methodology. I, I believe it meets state statutes. Um, there were just a couple of um, changes in there that uh, um, I noted in your packet that um, it, it does shift some of the, the assessment from uh, local business owners to uh, the state of Montana and other uh, nonprofits. But um, I don't think it's significant. However, they believe that it's more uh, evenly distributed throughout the, the district to the property owners. And I don't disagree with that. And um, I do appreciate all of the things that the BID does for the, for the Helena area. And I'm happy to have uh, John Dandy as the new executive director. We've, we've um, established a pretty good working relationship. And um, at that, I'm just going to turn it over to you.
Thanks so much, Director Dandless. Um, I will get to uh, the proposed new assessment methodology here in a couple of minutes. But just uh, if anybody doesn't know, uh, the Business Improvement District is trying to make that one better. By better, I mean, more prosperous, more valuable, more fire, uh, better place to live and work, better place to do business. Um, we proposed it, so I'll just tell you what we do first. And, and we propose to continue uh, doing a lot of the things we've done before. Uh, we do the flowers and we're increasing, uh, the flowers start Wednesday morning at five AM. And uh, we're increasing those by twenty-five percent this year, because people loved them last year. We maintain the uh, landscape areas on a three and four hundred blocks, Last Chance Gulch. I hired somebody into that in-house this year and they look just beautiful. Um, and so our budget reflects all these programs that I'm going to tell you about. Um, the, the holiday decorations produce an improvement with budgeted some money to do. A little shabby, but um, uh, we're doing what I'm calling now sanitation. Used to be called streetscape, but I'm calling it what it is. We pick up trash. And we're, um, as most of you all know, we're sponsoring a portable toilets at uh, Constitution Park that's seeing some use. It's a need uh, that we're, we're fulfilling. So it's in our budget for this year, um, to provide another one if we need another one or to further clean the one we have. Um, we're going to continue with graffiti removal and prevention. Somebody does that once a month for us. We do the banners in the spring, um, and in the winter we change those out. And uh, we've budgeted to get some new summer ones, because people don't like the summer ones. Um, we do facade and bark with grants. Yeah, they're, they're red. They look like Christmas people say, but we'll, we'll see what comes of that. It's budgeted, but that's not a promise.
If I told you we like it, then it would stay.
You like the summer, well, the mayor, the mayor likes it.
I can't tell you, you know, because, you know, people don't like it, you change it, people like it.
Yeah, we're not going to please everybody. I hear a lot of negative things about the summer, summer banners. Yeah, we're not going to please everybody. I hear a lot of negative things about the summer summer banners. Um we're continuing to do facade and park with grants to make downtown more vibrant and look better. Um we spend some money on marketing um to try to bring people into the downtown and improve the business climate downtown. One thing that you don't see reflected in a line item except in salaries is that we do provide advocacy for our constituents. If a group of people has an issue, we get them together and find out what it is and try to act as a liaison between city and our business and property owners. I mean, sometimes we can just answer the questions without referring them to the city and um that saves you all a little time and money. Um so that's the basics of our programs. You have our our budget in front of you. It's around three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um almost all of that coming from assessment. We do appreciate uh a partnership with the city. Uh on our budget for picking up the trash downtown. Um we we've um. We're building the uh the relationship has always existed, but we have a good partnership in the making. Um with the city on a lot of these projects. Um and you can look down the budget and ask me any questions you'd like about those line items, but the uh dollar values reflect what we intend to spend on the programs. Um any questions there?
Commissioners?
Oh, just programs and budget now and then I'll talk about the assessment methodology.
Okay.
Yeah, great. So our uh board does recommend a a new assessment methodology. This came from the uh twenty twenty BID renewal process. There were folks that voted for it that wanted to investigate the assessment and how it's done. And there were definitely folks who voted against it. We wanted to investigate uh how the assessment is done. Um so we're proposing the fee structure that you see in front of you. Um the the purpose behind that, it was a, there was a lot of stuff that had to do with um. How properties were classified. And who was in charge of how properties are classified and how properties are classified determines how much you pay, so it's important. Um and then what happened with the square footage of some of the um condo units, the the rights of way. The um it was just difficult to explain. It was very complicated and difficult to even figure out, much less explain. Um how the assessments were calculated. So they um we did formal committee way back in twenty twenty. Um and they, as Director Danielson said, brought forward a proposal last year that included a big increase in the city's contribution through assessment. Um that did not go anywhere and um that is not exists in this particular proposal, but it's similar to the one that they brought last year in other regards. Um we proposed that all the um that any, anything that has an assessment code, any property that's assessed pays a flat fee. For commercial, that's three hundred dollars. For residential, it's a hundred. And pay a percentage of the tax value. Uh for commercial, four percent, for residential, one percent. And what we've and what we've eliminated uh for tax properties is that the part of the calculation that has to do with the area, the square footage of the place. Because that's where we got, that's where everything got really confused. Depending how big your condo building was or how small it was, you paid different or there were common areas in condos. Parking lots were treated differently. Some of them were assessed and some weren't, and that was all the square footage part of it. So uh they eliminated that for tax properties. The upshot is that we make uh about fifteen thousand dollars less a year. Um and that's a conservative estimate because we don't have any property values in yet, so that's based on the property values that we have. So it's a slight reduction in budget, five percent reduction. Um but a five percent reduction in a time of inflation, right? So it is significant. Um. And uh I I believe that summarizes our proposal and you have the the documents in front of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so I think a couple of things, I I I've been the commissioner that's been sitting on the BID. So I've seen a lot of this and we get lots of emails from all sorts of sorts of folks. Um I will say, I think Director Debbie's been doing a really, really great job and should very much be commended um for his work because it has been. We've had a lot to catch up on very quickly and while also trying to, you know, provide more for downtown. Um, yeah, absolutely. I do think that one thing we, I just want to make sure we all draw our attention to is that. Commercial properties are going to experience the biggest decrease under this new assessment, um which means. I would say we're disincentivizing more private housing downtown. Um. We have some of the pieces of our TIF district that I think is, it's a separate thing, but it's very connected to how to improve vitality in this particular area. Um one of the goals within the downtown TIF district is not only improving um vitality for business, but also being a vibrant place to live. Um and our growth policy encourages greater density and this is the place where we can experience. A lot of significant density without impacting people's quality of life. Um so. I just think that's something for the commission to be thinking about. Um I also think there were, there were four plans that the board considered. Um, one of them, I think. We have um maybe met some of the needs while without um having such a drastic decrease and it was Plan One. Um and I'm sure that we can get that information to the commissioners who are interested um without cutting the budget as much. So I and I think that there's, if this is what the BID is proposing, you know, we. We essentially are saying, yep, you you need MCA, but I think it's worth noting um for. A nearly three hundred thousand dollar assessment to a particular area downtown. We want it to work for the folks that are down there while also making them prove that that MCA envisions for a BID. Um and I think there were alternatives that would have met some of the desires of of property owners downtown without the loss of revenue. Um meanwhile, we are establishing, you know, stronger and better partnerships with the city, but the city is also. You know, we are considering helping out more um financially with with solid waste. Um and we have proposals in front of us about um sanitation. Uh in terms of a, you know, public restrooms um with ongoing costs. And so I think that um. The thi- the things that, I mean, if the BID voted to continue to exist in twenty twenty. Personally, I think that's a really good thing, but I don't think that we should set it up for failure so that ten years from now, there are folks who say. You had ten years and three million dollars in assessments. What did you do with them? Um so I would just urge the commission to be thoughtful um about some of this. Um. I think at the time, as the director mentioned, times inflation, this assessment cuts a pretty significant part of their budget. Um while also asking them to fulfill the goals of what the ID is supposed to do. So I I'd just like to put that out there for everyone.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner, were you online to hear the mayor?
Do you have any public comments?
I have no public comment on that.
Thank you, Director Dendy. Recreation of Urban Forest Management Special District, Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. So um I believe we have mentioned at uh either a commission meeting or an administrative meeting in in recent. Um months that the Urban Forestry Special District is um set to expire at the end of this year at December thirty first, twenty twenty three. And um per the the uh MCA, um we're required to go out and um do another survey of land. And to incorporate uh all of the the boundaries um within the city limits. So when we first established the the district, um there was a survey done. And um it 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 set the boundaries of the district at the time um that of city limits. But since then, we've not been able to um collect from owners outside of that that boundary line because it's a special district. It needs to go through um this this survey process. And so since it's expired uh twenty twenty three, we engaged a professional surveyor to uh reestablish the the boundary lines of the special district. Um and I believe that uh going forward, future investigations with the city. Um will be asked to waive their right to protest against special districts so that we won't run into these boundary limitations. Um, you know, as the city expands or grows. Um this also requires that we have uh two public hearings which um are set to happen um. On the twenty sixth of uh June and then also on the in later in August. Um that sets a period of sixty days for um residents or property owners within the the boundaries that were established by the survey to protest. Um should fifty percent or more of the landowners um or or uh areas of property um protest, then uh the district dies. We wouldn't bring it forward um to the commission for uh renewal. But if we receive less than the amount protested, then we bring it to the commission to adopt a final resolution in August. Um we're not proposing any uh increase to the assessment, which right now is thirty nine dollars per uh taxable property assessment. Um and just to back up what the district does and how it was created is to um uh plant, protect, maintain, preserve and care for the public trees. And the public rights away. Um and so that particular fund, which is our Urban Forestry District Fund, employs um um. Our arborists and uh they do an excellent job in maintaining the trees in the city. And should this funding go away, um you know, the the commission would have to reconsider on 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 the on the. The services that are being currently provided because they're solely funded by the assessment on the district. Um I did draft, so we're in the process. I met with city attorney, met with the open lands director, parks director. Um and a few others to uh make sure that uh we understood the process. Um we looked back at when it was last created about fifteen years ago. Um we were back to all those notes and actually engaged the same engaged the same surveyor that did the prior survey to update the current survey. So we did get that work done. Um we're uh now before you just to uh as a notice that um will be. Our next step is to send out letters um to all of the property owners. Um we have engaged um a local printing company to do that printing forests over. Um I believe when we counted, there was around thirteen thousand five hundred letters that going out, so we'll be, we'll be seeing that in your in your mailboxes here soon. Um as part of that notice, um we're giving them uh um the information of the public hearing, um what the district is for. They'll also have a a protest form that's in that letter. Um they'll have the opportunity to uh return that protest form to the city court's office who will record those. And I know that um Ms. Clayburn is is uh happy to do that and um take that information and record it. And we'll gather that information to determine whether or not um we'll move forward with an actual public hearing in August. Um at this time, I am happy to answer any of your questions regarding the renewal of the district.
Comments from the commission? Oh, go ahead.
May I just to add something, just to just to support what Director Danielson is saying? Whenever there is a jurisdiction wide district created, it is dissolved within thirteen years automatically by statute. It was set to be dissolved and we have to recreate it now. In order to be recreated, we have to go through all the same procedures as if it was being created anew. And that's the reason why uh Director Danielson has gone through all of the effort she has in order to uh do the survey, to do the letters. Uh provide protest and and the process is as it is as set out by statute. I just wanted to answer that question, should you have one, about why this is such a um a process to go through.
Thank you. She just told you, don't ask questions.
Mayor, I might um add to that. So um and speaking with uh Manager Burton, that this particular process was established by. Um the Montana State Legislature and it does um add uh quite a bit of an additional cost um to the city to have to recreate this district. And uh it it it's a bit of a, you know, a burden instead of having to be able to just continue with it. But um we we see the value in this district and um which wants, you know, obviously prompted us to want to recreate the district moving forward.
Thank you.
Right, and Mayor, I'm just very quickly, that happened at the last legislative session. Uh since since these districts after ten years, the whole process, the additional cost. We know that the citizens of Helena appreciate the service, that it's from. Afar, you know, we're like spending this time and energy because that decision.
Great.
Are there other districts that will be similarly affected?
Like the citywide districts. It could could uh it could affect the Open Space Mainland District in the future.
Thank you.
Mayor, I might ask um Director Leland if it impacts the the landfill monitoring district as well. I think it's a, that's a special district that has specific boundaries.
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm not, I don't believe so, but we will have to review that. I think it was a requirement and I think there's other extenuating circumstances, but we will have to look at it.
Any other comments from the commission?
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I guess with other citywide districts possibly sunsetting or dissolving, is there a way? Or is there a possibility of consolidating our efforts to talk about trees, talk about the other citywide districts, all in the same effort for mailing? Et cetera, or does do they all have to be separate?
Mayor and Commissioner Shurtlip, they have separate expiration dates and they're um handled by statute separately to give uh the opportunity for. Um the residents to be able to understand what's being asked of them in protest for for that particular one district.
They are also, just to add to that, there also may be separate requirements for each one of them and how they're originally created. And so you would have to do it separately for each one of them.
Great. Madam Clerk, any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Danielson. Personnel policies, you're the director, Director McMahon, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um now that the human resources staff is starting to get our legs under us, we are identifying priority policies that need some review and approval by you if you're inclined. As we continue to go through the policies and learn and administer them, we'll continue to bring some forward to you. Um as we, you know, revise that they have um suggestions for you to consider. So today we have um several policies that I'd like to propose and be their changes or additions um to policy. So the first one is uh an updated policy, workplace violence. So you may remember back in twenty twenty one legislation, um. The the definition of authorized and unauthorized firearms and the concealed carry law was implemented. So what we did here in this particular policy is down um in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, I believe. Fourth or fifth paragraph that talks about who as a city employee is authorized to carry a weapon. And so basically, we've just defined um an authorized weapon to be a sworn law enforcement officer. And then they're the only people then who can have a weapon or a firearm in the course and scope of their responsibilities as a city employee. It didn't change anything in terms of being able to have weapons and firearms in vehicles, whether it's a city vehicle or even when a person is conducting, or in the event a person is conducting city business in their own vehicle, they may not have a firearm. So it just clarifies when and where and who can have a firearm as a city employee in the scope of their responsibilities. So that's that one. Do you want to just go through them and then have questions? The second one is, again, an existing policy, the position classification and position descriptions. Basically, most of our reclassification requests sync up in our in-cycle with our budget cycle. We'll continue to encourage that and administer it that way. But this does allow for an off-cycle reclassification in the event there's a structural issue or there are issues with the classification request. It's not something that I think would be, you know, commonly used. We do want to sync it up with the with the budget cycle. But we have found times and situations where the current policy does not allow for off-cycle budget cycle reclassifications. So it just gives us a little more flexibility in administering the policy, and then it also documents the process. Before, it was not clearly defined for department heads on how to even go about requesting a reclassification, what circumstances that may include, and, you know, what it is that's required for the Human Resources Office to evaluate positions and classify positions. So it does two things. One, it allows for an off-cycle, as long as a budget can tolerate that reclassification in the current budget, and two, it does clarify what's required and needed in a reclassification request. So pretty minor changes there, but it does help us administer this policy. The standards of conduct policy, the last time the standards of conduct policy was updated was in two thousand nineteen. And what happened was that it was a complete replica of statute for expectations of public employees as defined in the Montana Code. And it's interesting because it's literally a download of the Montana Code with strikeouts of the sections that don't apply to the city. So for example, school districts and things like that. And so what this does is it talks about, you know, you must adhere to that Montana Code, but it better defines for us the expectations of our city employees and what we value in terms of workplace conduct. And this will help us in furthering our mission to be the best employer possible and to also, you know, basically hold employees accountable and set models of of how we want to conduct ourselves as employees and representatives of the city of Helena. So this is, I would say it's an existing policy, but it's really a newly developed policy over what we currently have. A couple of new policies I'm proposing. One is the ability for our employees to donate sick leave to probationary employees. This is a real issue with us, given the tight labor market and the turnover that we've had. We have lots of new employees, and for example, some are expecting, some got COVID, some, you know, were injured, and they did not have available leave balances for them, and nor could they even take them in some circumstances because code says, you know, people cannot take sick leave until they've been employed three months, and they cannot take vacation until they've been there six months. But these unforeseen circumstances, or even in the event of an expected parent, we did not have any grace in giving them any time off. And so this allows for employees to donate up to to donate their sick leave for up to eighty hours to a recipient. And the reason we limited it, I guess, or defined it as eighty hours is these employees are still probationary employees, right? We do need to make sure as much as they can be to to be at work and learn and train and onboard over their probationary period. But these circumstances have and do arise with new employees, and it's been a real, you know, struggle for some people who've had these circumstances, and they don't have any leave available to them. So that's the proposal for sick leave donation for probationary employees. Lastly, we have a consensual relationships policy. We currently at the City of Helena do not have a consensual relationships policy. This is just good business to have this kind of a policy. It defines, you know, the nature of relationships, whether they're romantic, intimate, or sexual, to be reported under any circumstance, no matter what department employees are in. It's a reporting to the the department. Where the Human Resources Office gets involved is if there's any authority perceived implied or real authority over another person in such a relationship. And this particular policy requires not only mandatory reporting of that relationship, but also discontinuing any authority over the other employee. And so we want to basically remove that dynamic out of the workplace for many probably obvious reasons. And so this helps us again to identify, or excuse me, to, you know, provide structure and protocol about those relationships in the workplace. So that's really the the high, probably major points I'd like to make on these proposed policy changes in the new policies.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate these updates. It makes a lot of sense. I can remember when the standards of conduct were simply based in personnel mistake. Never really made sense. We are as an employer, so I really appreciate that.
Do you have one question on your probationary? Makes a little sense. A probationary employee did not make their probation, does that donation go back to the individuals or does it stay in a bank?
The way, Commissioner and Mayor, the way it would be administered is it would be an hour per hour donation to the person. So if they needed forty hours, we would give them forty hours. We wouldn't have a bank.
I'm sorry, maybe I question. What what happens in the event the probationary employee, say they get some donation of sick leave from fellow employees, and then they don't make, let's say they're fired. What happens to their, that those donations, just out of curiosity?
Mayor, Commissioner, first of all, to be able to request that requires the approval of the department head and myself. So I think that there's a good sense of persons performing, not that it's perfect. But in the event that a temporary employee were allowed to have the eighty hours, and then later did not make the probation, that's it.
If the eight hours they use, they use. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Manager Burton, do you have your directions? Comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned. Let's move to a live call.